So go to A. Go to A. Did they get R E C? What do they use called? There was that answer.
All rise. We'll have Pastor Greg Hudson as we work for him.
It's great. Dear God, we come to you this evening and we thank you for the freedoms and privileges we have to meet together. Lord, we thank you again that we've just come through an election in this nation. Whether things turn the way we liked or didn't like, we know that we got up the next day in a peaceful transition, not civil war or things that happened in other countries when elections happen. We just thank you for that and forgive us for taking it for granted. Again, thank you for these freedoms. Be with us tonight, guide us in our business to have wisdom and make proper decisions. And we thank you for your blessings. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I ask of God, Martina Mananas, who leads in special allegiance.
I.
With the allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we'll have the phone call.
Steve Arnett.
Here.
Mike Scipio.
Here.
Greg Hudson.
Here.
Harold Craig O.
Here.
Greg Wolf.
Here.
Connie Thompson.
Present.
Jim Hughes.
Here.
Linda Bogus.
I'm here.
Your being corn present, I declare the November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Dunbar City Council in order. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the November fifth, two thousand and eighteen council meeting. There's been a motion by Councilman Craig O. to approve the minutes of the November fifth, two thousand and eighteen council meeting, seconded by Councilman Scipio. Any questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. It's not on the agenda, so we'll have a little bit of a presentation and recognition. Scott's the tallest, so Scott, will you come forward and unveil? And what he's going to show us are the banners that we approved at the last council meeting that'll be going along Dunbar Avenue and Tenth Street, and then these will be going on Twelfth Street in front of City Hall.
We've got one up next Monday, right, sir?
All goes well.
It'll go.
Hope our lights will come in, Daddy.
Tell me until Bob gets back from vacation.
Actually, Leach is the team player. Next item on the agenda is invoices for payment.
Mr. Chairman, I smoothly repay our invoices for this period totaling forty thousand dollars, forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents.
There's been a motion by Councilman Hudson to approve payment of invoices totaling forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents, seconded by Councilman Scipio. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda under new business is approval to transfer six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents to Dunbar Avenue for paving of the road to Laura Anderson Lake, the general fund to a dedicated fund account. Shall move.
You said that, Jim.
I don't know if we discussed this at the last month's or last meeting, but there was money donated for the improvement of the road to Laura Anderson Lake, and what we're doing is taking this out of the general fund and putting it in a dedicated account, so it doesn't lose its identity. We've been doing that with several items, so that if it carries over from this fiscal year to the next, it won't, it won't get lost in the budgeting process. There's been a proper motion by Councilman Scipio to approve the transfer of funds, seconded by Councilman Hughes. Further discussion? Being none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Next item on the agenda is approval for the police department to purchase a handheld fingerprint scanner for seventeen hundred dollars, funds to come from Knoll County Commission grant and drug seizure arrest grant funds.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve handheld scanner purchase for the police department.
Second. Chief, you want to give us a quick rundown for everybody as to what that's about?
Thank you, Mayor, Council for approving that. This is a portable handheld scanner. When you arrest someone, this isn't for taking their fingerprints, because we know most people today aren't carrying IDs. They don't have them. People we've been dealing with, if they have a previous arrest record, this will be able to scan and tell us if they might suspect the name, date of birth. We've had several incidents lately. One was February on Sixteenth Street. U.S. Marshals came up, kicked in the door on that. Heard about that, but he'd been on the run for four years and escaped via out of the Fleet, Kentucky. We'd actually dealt with him before, and obviously been given us false information. That's where it presented that. We've already shared his apartments a lot, and I was kind of ignorant. I thought they were really expensive and like Councilman Wong. I thought it's a lot of monthly expenses to them, but really not. It's valuable tools.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? There's been a proper motion by Councilman Wolf to approve the purchase of the handheld fingerprint scanner, seventeen hundred dollars, seconded by Councilman Hughes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Next item on the agenda is approval of eighteen hundred dollars for the city Dunbar employee Christmas lunch set for December fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Shall move. Second. There's been a motion by Councilman Scipio to approve the expenditure of eighteen hundred dollars for the city of Dunbar employee Christmas lunch set for December fourteenth, seconded by Councilman Hudson. Further discussion or comment? Being none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is approval of payment to the city of Nitro humane officer in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty cents. I'm going to say approval. Second. This is a quarterly payment to the city of Nitro, and it'll be dispersed, the money will be dispersed quarterly. We're still working out some of the details. There's been a motion by Councilman Craig O. to approve the payment to the city of Nitro for the humane officer in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty cents, was seconded by Councilman Arnett. Any further question or comment? Being none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is approval to replace the bed on the dump truck that cost of seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. Second. There's been a motion by Councilman Scipio to replace the bed on the dump truck that cost of seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars, seconded by Councilman Wolf. Any question, discussion, or comment? Being none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, approval to replace brakes and drums on two thousand and fourteen garbage truck that cost of two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and twelve cents. Shall move. Second.
You knew it.
There's been a motion to approve replacing the brakes on the two thousand and fourteen garbage truck that cost of two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and twelve cents. Motion was made by Councilman Scipio, seconded by Councilman Hudson. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Next item on the agenda is approval to repair two thousand and eight garbage truck heater and control rod that cost of two thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty one cents. Shall move. Second. There's been a motion by Councilman Scipio to approve repairing the heater and control pot in the two thousand and eight garbage truck that cost two thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty one cents, seconded by Councilman Wolf. All those in favor, or any questions, comments? Being none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Last item under new business is approval to award contract for separation of the roof cranes at City Hall. What that is, is to try to stop some of the intrusion of water into the senior center downstairs, do it for, to separate all that rainwater from the plumbing system.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award a contract for this not to exceed eleven thousand dollars.
Second. There's been a motion to approve awarding, awarding a contract for separation of the roof cranes at City Hall that it costs not to exceed eleven thousand dollars by Councilman Hudson, seconded by Councilman Wolf. Any further questions or comments?
Just to comment that we're sitting at cap on it, because we're still waiting on a few bits to come in, but this way, once they come in, as long as they meet the standard, they can pursue it, because water just come in. They would have to wait another two weeks for that. That's why we're not naming it, because it's not been awarded yet.
Any further comment, discussion? Being none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Now we get down to the fun part. We'll let interim sanitary board director Matt Dawson be the first.
Mayor and Council citizens, right now, we are getting gearing up to fix a few drains that we have to bottom with. It's lower in the street, so as soon as we get a few days of good weather, we'll repair those and hopefully get those fixed quickly.
Tell them which one is very important.
At the intersection of Sixteenth, Seventeenth Alley and Dunbar Avenue. And we have two drains up on Garnet Street that are in need of urgent repair.
Bring a big round of balls, everybody. I think we figured out a solution today. We're going to try. What we're working towards, they're a little bit slowed down right now for the, for the winter floods, and they're caught up on some things, and hopefully we can get, get some of these storm drains and things raised up, and there's not much of a problem. For those of you that have concern about the humpity-hump down.
That's not us.
The contractor, Tri-State Mike Line, Tri-State Having, have been working with the water company, and they're working on the thirty-six inch main line. They've been cutting access ports into it. They have to physically put in these great big faults, because there's an opening inside there that they put a man inside the pipe to go in and do repairs inside of that line. So that's the reason that humpity-hump is there. So they assured us that they would be coming back in, once they know they're not going to have to dig the street up again, and they will pull with a, the street, so it's uniform, all the way across the street, curb to curb, at a hundred, hundred feet each direction, so it would be a smooth transition instead of, instead of the hump that we got.
Is somebody at the sanitary board, somebody that comes from West Virginia or Water, to fix the hole when they cut it out?
Yeah, you can hold them out.
Because that one, they're on Eighth Street, about State Farm, so there's just, it's getting washed all the time.
Okay. Just home to one.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dawson? This may be very exciting. All right, police chief.
Very small crowd. I want to go back to the fingerprint scanner. Can't, we just can't walk up and ask you to put your finger in that scanner and tell you something. I've got that reasonable suspicion. I probably caused to get to that one, so shouldn't be getting any complaints for just out there doing that. I want to recognize Central High School Political Science Class, four young ladies sitting here. I'm not asking to speak now, but I heard you asked your council to speak with the councilman, the third city council, for the mayor to have any further questions on this walk off. Back on the table, we printed off some safety tips. I don't know if everyone got one of those. Two things I want to deliver. We started going to businesses, we're talking to businesses about some things we're going to do this holiday season, but things especially old people, probably not to deal with, that we want you to deal with. Security, the gift cards, if you notice on the back of the gift card, there's a security pin you have to scratch off, activated, not activated, but for online purchases. When you buy your gift cards this winter, if that number, if that covering has been scratched off, don't buy that card, because what people do, they go in and scratch off some of those security pins, take a picture of two or three of them, go home, and they just get on the computer, swipe in the account number and pin to see if it's been activated. If it is, then they purchase something. It's impossible for us to investigate that. Check and measure if covering's on that security pin, and if it's been scratched off, don't buy it. We all know that you're going to buy them in a week to, it's going to be several weeks before you give them to guests. Plenty of time for me to take my list. I don't have to write down a camera, just take pictures of them all, try them all, sooner or later they're going to hit. If you're loving them, just not on the money, and that will charge you. Another thing, counterfeit money, these businesses are prior receiving the hundred and twenties in Santa Claus Valley right now. So first, the restaurants, when they see that, we've been giving them back, it's changed to people, so they don't have to take the loss, because even if they put it in a bank deposit and wants to get some bank, if the bank catches it, they deduct that from the deposit. Two, businesses, not all of them, there's some good ones out there, especially the restaurants, the waitresses, they don't want to take the loss on counterfeit money. They're starting to recirculate it into changes. Check that. If you think you have a counterfeit bill, wire there to register, ask for a new bill. That way you're on camera, you're not in position. And a small council, but the next council member is going to be doing swearing in of the three new officers. I'd ask if they're going to come out and support him. With that, any questions? Deputy Chief Bowers.
I only have a couple things to talk about. As you guys know, two weeks ago, we had an election on behalf of the fire department. I want to say thank you to the citizens for passing and approving the levy. Every, every member of that fire department went out and put up signs, hung banners. We did Facebook posts, videos, news interviews, anything we could try to do to try to get this to pass. On behalf of everybody, I want to say thank you to the citizens that voted yes. The other thing that I want to talk about, some of you guys may already know this. I hope Chief Fongill talked about this at the last meeting, but once again, we are participating in the Operation Warm, where we take donations to buy coats for children that are in poverty. Last year, we were able to give out sixty-two coats to children at the primary school. This year, we're trying to, we're shooting for seventy-five. Again, thank you, Mr. Scipio, for, for your donation. I have a few handouts if anyone's interested. I'll leave one up here. I'll put the other two out in the hallway. If you have any questions about that, you can send me after the meeting or stop by the fire station one day. You might have a question.
Okay. Mr. Elliott.
Mayor, Council, and citizens, just want to let you know that limb trucks out, but very few times now. The leaf trucks are out sucking the leaves every day. If you have a pile of leaves, get them as close to the curb without going into the street with them so that we can suck them up. We're putting all new signs up all over town. They're starting to see them everywhere, the street signs on every corner. Other than that, trying to keep trucks running and garbage picked up. Now, there won't be any pickup Thursday, Friday, so if your, Thursday is normally your day of pickup, we'll be picking it up on Monday. So that means we'll be picking up four routes on Monday with those four routes. If we're late, we're a little bit late. Don't worry about it. We'll get there. We're running dump trucks and everything else, trying to get everything cleaned up, but we will get it all that day, on Monday. If anybody has any questions, don't take them out.
What about the intersection of Sixteenth Street and Butcher Avenue?
That is a ongoing project, Matt.
The ongoing project.
We had two people taken off of that and finished up this week. They're off for deer season.
Makes it count enough to get in there, you know, with the old people out there.
We, we plan to have that boards next Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
So that's our.
Matt, Matt has been instrumental in trying to get the sidewalks fixed out through there, so that you can make another announcement later on, whenever the time comes. He's been helping out with that and just running right, trying to keep everything cleaned up for the last few weeks, the holidays, the trash trucks being down. We've had a little bit of hard time getting it done, but we're getting there.
Okay, Mr. Go.
Just got two things to mention. The Christmas parade is coming up on December seventh. The line is at six behind Ollie's. The parade starts at seven. And the home decorating contest will go out through all four wards. The police department will be judging those and bringing it back to us, and that starts December first through December thirteenth, and then we'll announce the winners on the last council meeting of the, of the year.
Good one. Do y'all have anything? All right. Other comments, questions, concerns? Being none, we'll start with.
Just like to challenge everybody this week, really, week of Thanksgiving, to stop and think of where, where you're at and the people before us. Like, I, I was thinking of church yesterday, back in the sixteen hundreds, except sailed into where they were going to go. We just wanted to find someplace where they can wash it free. I don't have many of died, but a lot of it, wouldn't that somewhere. But this day, I, I get the privilege of meeting with my family and in my home on Thanksgiving Day, going home, my family's here, get to eat food prepared, and I'm just, I'm just thankful for people before we make possible, we can do this. I hope you, hope you give thanks this week for what's been provided to you.
I, I got one concern. It's the, the blacktop filling pothole we started back in the spring, which still isn't completed. The plant's about ready to close up. We need to get a crew on this, you know, let them work three, four days in a row, whatever it takes, instead of one day here and there, and get this done, get it, get it finished before the plant. I mean, as far as the, the sidewalks go on Sixteenth Street, you know, we can get concrete whenever, blacktop, when that plant closes, that's it. I, I think we need to jump on that soon as all of it.
Problem with serving that being said, problem is that I've got a truck, and I've got to go clear the sand office, pick this stuff up, since it's thirty-two, thirty-nine, forty degrees. By the time it gets back here, it's rock hard and they'll kick you.
They're not putting any out across the track?
They won't sell to us. They're selling to West Virginia, the state of West Virginia for the interstate only.
We need, we need to get those things fixed, and it will be the same load that we were just.
I'll try to get some tomorrow if it's above fifty, I'll try to get some, get a load out.
Tomorrow's turning cold.
Every day that it gets a little bit warmer, I'll try to get a load out.
Always get that.
That is a workable plant. Plant's loaded on Saturday, so maybe not.
I'd say Sunday, but maybe not Saturday.
Take a moment to thank the citizens, and as Deputy Chief Burger mentioned, the levy passed very strong. Without that, we would be in a, in a critical situation with fire police. So thank you, citizens, for that. And that being said, then we have to move on now and try to, as we already began, bringing up again a finance meeting to, to tackle some other problems with the fireman's pension, but we wanted to make sure we at least will pass the crisis stage with levy. Now we need to move on to that. The police, their pension is very stable, very solid. In fact, next year, it'll actually start going down in our payments. It's reached its peak, and it'll go down, but the fire still has a lot of work to go. But the first step is done, and that we got the levy for five more years, and we can move forward then on addressing the other issues. But thank you all, citizens, for that.
I want to say, and what Steve said, I don't think that could be said any better, and we, the people here in Dunbar, we are blessed, and I might wish for all of you to have a blessing. Thanks, Kevin.
I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
I'm good.
Same here. I thank everybody for coming out, all the fallen heads for their, their work that they constantly are out doing, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. and, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and I was very thankful to go on with Carol Dunlap, and on Thursday, it is his birthday. So I wish Carol a happy birthday.
Early.
I'd like to thank everybody for that, too, want to remind everybody about the Neighborhood Watch Program that we got going on, this goes on all year round. Uh, especially this time of Thanksgiving, the Christmas time, uh, keep in mind your neighbors. Big thing is if you see something, report that. Uh, I know a lot of people are doing things out on Facebook, but the police can't respond if they don't have a report to, to go. So if you see something, it's a little activity, someone breaking into something, please call ASAP. Don't wait and, and call late. Uh, our meetings are always the second Thursday, every night, uh, every Thursday of each month downstairs in the senior citizen hall. Hopefully, uh, continue with the big groups that we've been having. But again, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Want to tell everybody, if you're traveling any at all this weekend, please be careful. We want to see your smiling faces back here for our next meeting, and have a great Thanksgiving. Wear your stretchy pants to dinner.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, for the good of the order, if there is no other city business, I move that we adjourn this meeting. Snap it.